Good evening. This is a conference meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township held at City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey on Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025, at 7:01 PM. Roll call. Councilwoman Coley?
Present.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hillbert?
Present.
Council Vice President Montague III?
Present.
Councilwoman Ross?
Here.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Here.
Council President Wooton?
Here.
Also President is Tricia Cipio, Business Administrator Chris Hartwig, Deputy Business Administrator Laquanta T. Best, Fire Chief Derek Brown, CFO Niall Clements, City Attorney Gracia R. Montellus, Legislative Research Officer Marlin G. Towns. We'll now recognize a moment of silence. Is there anything that we would like to do in particular? Amen. We'll have a moment of silence. Amen. Please be apprised, anyone wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign their name on the comment sign-up sheet and will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to interact with the council. Sunshine Law. The requirements of the NJSA 10:4-9 et sa Sunshine Law has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in a record transcript on Thursday, July 10th, 2025, posted on a bulletin board in City Hall, the council's website, the city's website, and filed in the office of the city clerk. Matters for discussion. We'll now hear from our Essex County Liaison, Reginald Bledsoe.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
For the record, Reginald Bledsoe, Essex County Liaison. I just have a couple of announcements for you all, what we're hosting here in Essex County on October the 14th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Essex County will be hosting the Essex County Safe Streets for All, which will be a virtual community meeting. And I can provide that information to you all, so you can share it with your constituents as well. But we're also having an in-person meeting at Essex County Safe Streets for All at the East Orange Focus on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. So anyone that's interested in providing feedback on roadway safety in and around the county, feel free to come to those meetings to address some of your concerns as well. Additionally, Essex County, through the Department of Public Works, will be conducting a leaf pickup schedule between the dates of October 27th to the 25th to January 9th, 2026. Orange in particularly is a part of Section 4, and those dates is November 17th to November 21st and December 15th to December 19th. Additionally, Essex County will be hosting a computer electronics collection on Saturday, October 18th, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:30 PM. Items that we will be collecting are computers, monitors, printers, fax machines, scanners, telecom equipment, speakers, televisions, keyboards, and a whole host of other items as well. Large commercial items will not be accepted, and that will be held at our Essex County Public Works Facility, 99 West Bradford Avenue in Cedar Grove, New Jersey. Additionally, the county executive will be hosting his annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration Tuesday, October 14th, at the Essex County Martin Luther King Justice Building. Of course, 495 Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, all are welcome to attend. And last but not least, which has been ongoing planning for the last year and a half, is we officially have a date for the Park House in Essex County, Monte Even Park. That date will be October 27th at 12:00 noon. So all are welcome to attend, the residents as well, and all the elected officials. At this time, I'll open the floor to any questions that this body may have of me. It's been a while. As always, prior to these meetings, I'm a phone call or email away. Just let me know your concerns and your issues prior to these meetings, so that we can get some of those issues addressed and debated. So at this time, through your chair, Madam President, I'll answer any questions that the council may have.
Council President.
Councilwoman Easton.
What was the time for the recycling of the computers?
The recycling event will be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Councilman Ross?
Reggie, how you doing?
I'm well.
You said the community center?
Yes.
Is opening on the 27th?
That's gonna be the dedication of the event.
What time?
At 12:00 noon.
Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, thank you.
Anyone else?
Council President.
Councilwoman Hillbert?
Mr. Bledsoe, in regards to the community center, I had a few seniors who live across the street ask, will there be like a social worker on site? Will there be opportunities for them to apply to be like a receptionist or work in the center in any type of capacity?
So once the grand opening happens, there is opportunities to discuss potential collaboration. I do know that out of all the additional other park houses throughout the county, the Division of Senior Services often hold lunch in the parks sessions as well, and then bring in individuals where they can apply for like SNAP benefits, temporary rental assistance, any resources that's coming through the Division of Senior Services are part of the Department of Citizen Services. In terms of volunteering for that, that's something we could discuss with you all in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs, who will be ultimately responsible for managing the building.
Okay, so the seniors, they would be able to volunteer, but they won't be able to like work at the center in any capacity, like a receptionist or security?
No, because I know that it's gonna be a joint agreement between the county Sheriff's Department that's gonna be responsible for securing the building, in addition to local law enforcement here in Orange.
In Orange, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I'm just curious, who's gonna run the day-to-day operations of the center?
It will be the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs through the county.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Bledsoe.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, Summers Johnson?
Second, Montague.
A motion to suspend the rules was made by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilwoman Montague III. Is, are there any questions on the motion? Councilwoman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hillbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montague III?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Yes.
That's seven yeas, we have suspended the rules.
Yes. So I wanted to let my colleagues know that ordinance 61/2025 will be pulled by the administration. And resolution 412/2025.
It's being pulled?
Yes, by the administration.
414?
412.
412. While the rules are suspended, I want to look at 55/2025, and it was advised that we vote this down. Madam Clerk?
Yep. Ordinance 55-2025 and ordinance amending ordinance 21-2017 and ordinance 15-2020 relating to salaries of certain employees of the City of Orange Township. Is there a motion?
Motion, Summers Johnson?
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Weldon Montague III. On the motion?
On the motion.
Councilwoman Hillbert?
Yes. We're voting to vote this down? Why are we doing it now, why we can't just wait till we start the general meeting?
We're gonna vote to pull it down now, and we're voting to pull it down because it does not have the legislative intent of council members, who contacted me.
And Council President, if I may?
City Attorney Montellus?
So Councilwoman, just to answer your question, it can be done now that the rules are suspended, it's at the will of the body, so it doesn't have to be done at the regular portion of the meeting, so it can be done now.
Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else on the motion? Roll call. Councilwoman Coley?
Yes, yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
To vote it down.
Yes, to vote it down.
You're probably saying no.
Yes, to vote it down.
No, 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 no.
So she has to say no.
Right, you have to say no. Let's start back over. Roll call. If we're voting it down, we're saying no.
We're voting it down.
Correct.
Alright.
No.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Easton?
No.
Councilwoman Hillbert?
No.
Councilman Montague III?
No.
Councilwoman Ross?
No.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
No.
And Councilwoman Wooton?
No.
That's seven noes, this ordinance has not been adopted.
Is there anyone in the public that wish to speak?
On this particular ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure. You can vote it's been voted down, so somebody?
You can.
I just asked that.
I didn't know, it's just on that ordinance.
It's just this one?
I had it already prepared, I took my time, so I'd still like to say what I wrote, if it's okay.
Three minutes. I did, yes, ma'am.
Darnell Gibbs, 400 Lincoln Avenue. Good evening, everybody.
I can't hear you.
Sorry about that, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Outstanding. So I was gonna reference that, because in fact, everybody's seen that people's gonna get raises and everything like that, so I decided to do like a compare and contrast type thing. Let me look at other municipalities, see what their budget was, reference to city council members and the mayor, and also a part-time employee. So I have a small little list I would like to share with you all. Belleville, New Jersey, 3.3 square miles, the budget for both the mayor and city council is $43,000, population of 38,000 personnel, with a poverty rate of 10.4%. They actually have an ordinance, ordinance number 15-24, that the mayor or city council members' salary can't exceed. The mayor's $7,000, city council is $6,000, everybody else, their salaries can go up, provided they're a full-time employee. Bloomfield, New Jersey, 5.2 square miles, budget for both the mayor and city council, $83,000, population 53,000, poverty rate 8.8%. Carwell, I dislike that city, so I threw that one in there. It's 1.2 square miles, the budget for the mayor and city council, $42,000, population 9,000, poverty rate 5.9%. Cedar Grove, 4.2 square miles, 13,000 in population, poverty rate of 3.4%. They actually have an ordinance, 25-950, that states part-time employees' raise shall not increase no greater than 1% of the previous year. The great township of Orange, 2.2 square miles, the budget states that the combined salary for both the mayor and city council is $285,000, with a population of $34,000, with a poverty rate of 21%. So if you're thinking about spending cautiously, right, perhaps some people shouldn't take a raise, perhaps an ordinance should be adopted to the point where you guys, part-timers, in general, raise don't exceed an X amount of percentage, just for thought. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to state that everyone except one person here originally voted to make this a thing.
Can you state your name, ma'am, please?
Alicia Rodriguez, 47 Mountain View. So the fact that you're coming today and pulling it doesn't give me much faith that you're not gonna bring it back up to the table sometime this year. So, the city has already passed its budget for the fiscal year, now you wanna amend the budget and award yourself salary increases. I strongly oppose this increase, and I urge the council to reconsider. The proposal is both fiscally irresponsible and ethically questionable, given the city's current financial state. This amendment appears to circumvent the usual budget planning process and lacks transparency. Earlier this year, the city applied for a $2 million grant, or somebody did, from the state to avoid layoffs and to cover operating deficits. How can we justify raising administrative salaries for the same exact amount? Our taxes have already increased this year again, for me, $6,000, in less than five years, which has put pressure on working families and seniors. Residents were told this was necessary to stabilize the budget, not to raise executive pay. If the city was on the verge of layoffs and financially, and are financially unstable months ago, this move sent a confusing and troubling message to taxpayers. Can the council explain how a $2 million increase in salaries aligns with the city's financial priorities and with the promises made to taxpayers earlier this year? For the mayor who promised he would do everything possible to keep the taxes down after passing the $5 million increase last year. Here's another problem. Admin has stated there have been no layoffs in police or fire, but somehow we went from 150 officers, I think, approximately, in the spring to 119 as of last week, according to the chief. 30 officers leaving is not a success, that's a significant loss of personnel, and it means our city is now understaffed in critical public safety roles. This may have saved the city some money in the short term, but it has major consequences for public safety and community well-being. Now, despite the last positions and the strain of our police and fire department, the council is proposing raises of over 33% for the mayor and council, and admin for a total of $2 million. This feels completely out of touch with what the community is facing. We are losing officers, yet you are proposing to give yourself a massive pay raise. I wanna know if this is gonna be something that gets brought back to the table, or is it completely taken off?
Forty-five minutes left. Forty-four seconds.
So you don't have to respond?
No.
No.
Gloria Bozeman, 345 Alcott Street. I was going to include this with general comments, but since my colleagues have so eloquently expressed our concern in the community about what we're looking at, and even though tonight voted down as no, we're very cautiously optimistic, because we believe it'll come up again. Because I believe the first time it was brought up was the day after Labor Day, when most of us were not available or not in actually the area, or realizing that you had resumed your regular meetings, which of course, I told you before, I'm being left off the notification list, can we take care of that? So I just wanna add to what my, and emphasize what it is that my fellow residents have said. The average annual salary in the City of Orange is $93,913, and that's for our administration. It says on the documents of the government examining salaries that the City of Orange Township's average salary is 100% higher than the USA average, and the median salary is 122% higher than the USA median salary. From 2023 to 2024, the average salary of employees increased 3.2%. The median salary increased 12.3%. So we're asking you, how in good conscience are you able to address taxpayers, who are certainly at this particular point in time being taxed, without really seeing either us being represented in the discussion, or being able to see the services that we receive as a result of these higher taxes? So we are going to be diligent in looking at and making decisions about how we want to proceed in a community that doesn't respect us in terms of the services that we need, nor do they respect us in terms of the way we come to this podium and ask to be heard. And I understand that you have this opportunity to either respond or not to respond, but we're gonna have an opportunity to respond. And I want to remind you that we will take that opportunity seriously. So we're going to be cautious, and we're going to be listening for whether or not these experiences that you describe as necessary really reflect the desires of the community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing, Summers Johnson?
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Montague III.
There's a motion, a second, and on the floor, sir.
The motion and the second is on the floor, sir, I do apologize.
I misunderstood, I thought we were speaking out of the resolution.
We were.
It's on the ordinance, sir. It's the motion on the floor.
That there's a motion on the floor, I do apologize, sir.
Will public comment on other resolutions?
Yes. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, vote by saying aye. Public hearing is closed. Okay.
Does any?
One more thing here. The resolutions and ordinance to be presented at tonight's meeting are listed on the attached regular agenda. If any council member wishes to discuss any resolution or ordinance, it may be discussed at this time.
Anyone?
Yeah, Councilman Ross?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I saw this, this is to make Claremont a two-way traffic street, right?
Well, it's gonna, ultimately, it's to close it off, because when you're trying to come out of Claremont Terrace to South Center, it's been causing accidents. So ultimately, it's to close it off, so the one way actually is going the other way, you can't come up, you won't be able to go up Claremont Terrace.
Oh, okay.
Excuse us, please.
Is there?
Thank you.
Okay, but my second question to this, and I'm in favor of that, because I know that street is terrible for traffic coming out onto South Center.
It's probably a county issue as well, because of the South Center, South Center Street and South Harrison, there's just a merge, a yield, but that doesn't, they don't respect the people coming out of Claremont Terrace.
I understand that. Should there have been an engineer report or a traffic study?
So, we, okay, so before the gates went up, two blocks over, we put, the police put the speedometer there, we've, this has been going on for like three years. And to spend the money on a traffic study when there has been significant accidents at that residence, I just don't want that on us, because I was literally on the street, I think, two or three days ago, I couldn't get out. Like, no one was trying to let me out, and that was like in the afternoon, that wasn't morning rush, and that's what they're talking about, I'm just, I'm just.
I agree with you, I know totally what happens over there, but are we okay with no traffic report or?
Yeah, well, they have, they wrote a petition, the residents on the street are requesting it, and not that we have to have a petition, but I like petitions, because I don't live there, and I wanna make sure that the people that live there want it. And some of them are here today to speak during comments.
So legal-wise, are we good without a traffic or engineer report?
The short answer is yes.
Okay, then I'm good with it. Thank you.
Councilman Ross, why are you on that? I have a question to the business administrator. Has anyone costed out, how much that's gonna cost to get that done?
You mean the closing of, you mean the closing of Claremont?
Yeah.
Or turning it into a one-way?
Well, the one-way is easier.
Turning it into a two-way?
Just, just striping, but I'm talking about the cost, are you putting up gates again?
No, it's not gates.
No, there's no gates.
Yes, so it's not gonna cost no money at all?
There may be some necessary construction at the end of the road, down the road, but that would be budgeted for in a future year.
So it won't come out until next year's budget?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I just wanna make sure. Would they be able to put the police barricades for them in the meantime?
Yes.
Okay, can I move on?
Yes, sir.
59/2025. I looked at that, and I'm good with that, but the only thing is not up to par is probably because when this came before us and it was all good, is the registration has expired. I don't know if you have a new registration, the registration expired in June of 2025.
Would you like to table it? Until we could contact the recipient to get a new?
Yeah, I think we should, we should have the proper documentation.
Council President, can I, yeah, can I suggest we just pass it on first?
Okay.
And then, I mean, just so it doesn't be too much of a delay on this, um, person?
Not a problem. And if I can move on, 62/2025. And I guess this goes to the administration, I just need to have clarity as to how, what are these increases based on?
So we did a rate study, which we submitted to the clerk with the ordinance, and the rate study takes into account the ordinance that I pulled earlier, or indicated I was pulling earlier, which is the Lead Service Line Replacement Identification and Replacement Program. So when you adopt that ordinance and you project out what the fees are, even with the grants that we'll be receiving, the increases that are suggested in the fee ordinance are necessary to pay that debt and for that program. So before anybody jumps on that, it's not $20 million, we anticipate getting $16 million in grants, but the reason I pulled it is because we've got a question between the I-Bank and DCA as to how the 20 million and the 16 million are to be reflected in the ordinance, and we couldn't get through to them over the last couple of days to clarify that. So that will be coming back at the next meeting.
Okay, but on the second page, you have an increase of rates for 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30. I don't know how that was calculated.
We did it based upon the debt service and the operating expenses as set forth in the rate study that we gave, and that's available in the clerk's office if people wanna read it.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant. This was the grant that we received from Senator Brittany Timberlake?
Well, we received it from the state at the behest of Senator Timberlake, yes.
And was this posted in our FY 2025 budget?
Yes.
Do we have the money?
The last part of doing this before we draw down the 75% advance is doing the resolution, then that will be submitted, and that will make the application complete.
Do we have the money?
No, we won't be able to draw it down until we do the resolution.
Okay, and the application?
The application's complete on sage, except for the resolution.
Anyone else?
I have a couple more, I'm sorry, Council President.
No problem.
419. This is a resolution for that front door. I know that front door was broken way back in August, and it's been fixed, but now we're going out to bid for, to get it fixed. How did it get paid?
No, this was, we bid for the complete replacement of the frame, and the door works, and the bids came in too high, over what the budget was, so this is rejecting the bids.
For the whole door, not for the glass?
Correct.
Got it. I have one more. 427 and 428.
That's two more.
But it's the same thing, 'cause they're the same, they look the same to me. We have two different vendors doing the same thing.
One is actually for the credit card processing at the gate, and the other is for instant credit card processing when you drive through the gate. So one is for the machine, and one is actually for the gate itself.
Okay.
And one company doesn't do both.
One more.
Okay.
437, this is the last one, I'm sorry. This was a five-year contract, and this resolution is saying that we want to increase the contract for this year.
Correct.
What happens, and this contract doesn't expire until 2025. What happens, and this contract doesn't expire until twenty twenty-eight. What happens to year twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight?
There are two provisions within the original agreement, one of which addresses the operation and maintenance monthly costs and says that it'll be adjusted based upon a conversation on an annual basis based on actual expenses. The second piece is the MRR account.
How you know I've got to answer that?
The MRR account is work that's outside of the operation and maintenance agreement and that we basically run a credit card on with the operator. So, the work is usually emergency response work and/or things that are outside of the scope of the operation and maintenance agreement. An example would be, we had a billing problem and we needed to buy a hundred meters to replace a hundred meters very quickly, so they pay for that. It goes in the, against the MRR account, and then we true-up at the end of the year. This is the true-up for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Council, Council President?
Councilman Cooley.
Yeah, um, four twenty-four. Um, this means now that we're gonna be getting diesel fuel in the city garage?
So, the test that we did on the original diesel fuel showed that it was not of the grade that we needed for certain trucks and vehicles, including fire trucks. We had the tank cleaned, and this contract will allow us to buy the appropriate diesel.
So, when this resolution is passed, when will the diesel fuel be delivered, or how soon?
I don't have an exact date, but I know the tank was cleaned last week.
So, once the, uh...
It's ready to be accepted.
Once we have a, a fuel delivery of diesel, all our city vehicles that require diesel will now go to the city garage here?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, will those gas cars be, uh, taken back from the ones who have the cars for diesel?
So, most of the diesel trucks in DPW operate on one card that's kept down at the yard. There are cards issued to the fire department, and they will probably retain an emergency card just in case something malfunctions with the access gate or the pump.
Okay. All right, so what do you consider like an emergency, I mean, as far as them not being able?
They can't get to the, to the pump, where the pump isn't working.
All right, that's fine, right now.
Anyone else?
Motion to close?
Second?
Motion to close by Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson. Second by Council President Wooton. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council conference meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-four P.M. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township, held at City Hall, twenty-nine North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Tuesday, October the seventh, twenty twenty-five, following the conference meeting. We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Can we have Councilman Cooley?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Councilman Cooley.
President.
Councilwoman Easton.
Here.
Councilwoman Hilbert.
Present.
Council Vice President Montague III.
Present.
Councilman Ross.
Here.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Here.
Council President Wooton.
Here.
Also present is Tricia Cipio, Business Administrator Chris Hartweig, Deputy Business Administrator Laquanta T. Best, Fire Chief Derek Brown, Niall Klemic, CFO, City Attorney Garcia R. Montillas, Legislative Research Officer Marlon G. Towns. The requirements of NJSA ten colon four dash nine, E.S.A., sunshine law has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in the record transcript on Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty-five, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, the council's website, and the city's website, and filed in the office of the city clerk. Approval of meeting minutes. September sixteenth, conference meeting minutes. Council members Hilbert, Ross, and Wooton were absent and should abstain. Is there a motion?
Motion, Summers Johnson.
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague III. On the motion. Roll call, Councilman Cooley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Abstain.
Councilman Montague III?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Abstain.
That's four ayes and three abstains, this motion is adopted. Meeting minutes from September the sixteenth, the regular meeting was, Councilmembers Ross and Wooton were absent and should abstain. Is there a motion?
Motion, Cooley.
Second, Easton.
Motion by Councilman Cooley, second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion, any questions? Roll call, Councilman Cooley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague III?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wooton?
Abstain.
There are two abstains and five ayes, this motion passed. We have our reports, Department Monthly Revenue Collections. Parking meters for July twenty twenty-five collected ten thousand eleven, one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents. In August of twenty twenty-five, eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars and fifty-six cents. Public works for the month of September twenty twenty-five collected five hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Oprah Reports for the month of September twenty twenty-five, a hundred and eight were requested, fifty-nine complete, and forty-nine remaining. There was one communications and petition from New Jersey Transit informational public hearing. Citizens' comments. Members of the public wishing to address the council may do so during this portion of the meeting. Speakers must sign their name on the comments sign-up sheet and approach the microphone when called upon. To allow maximum public involvement, each speaker is permitted one three-minute period to interact with the council and must provide his or her name and street address prior to beginning any remarks. Visual aids are not permitted. Speakers are reminded to be courteous and mindful of other individuals. Each person has the right to speak on any subject but is responsible for abuse of that right. The city bears no liability for any comments made by the public and maintains discretion to remove any person engaging in obscene or disruptive conduct. The council will consider all comments and questions and will respond if and when appropriate, which may or may not be during this meeting.
Gerald Murphy?
No, no, he wasn't first, I do apologize, I'd already got the sheet. Got first one.
Sorry. Alicia?
Good evening, Alicia, Forty-seven Mountain View Ave. To Wooton, Easton, the attorney, and Summers Johnson, who previously, who previously spoke about reducing our speaking time, I've sent multiple messages and emails yet received no responses, except for one reply, which we don't need to mention because we can all guess who that came from. Again, I have to ask, what exactly have you accomplished when it comes to communication with the residents you were elected to serve? Councilwoman Easton, you suggested that we come in during business hours with our questions, but let's be honest, most working residents can't take off work between nine and four or five to do that. It's an unrealistic solution, there's also a pattern that keeps repeating itself in these meetings. We're told to ask our questions first, and then you'll respond. But too often, we get answers to questions we didn't ask, and we're not allowed to clarify or follow up because our time has run out. We're told to email our concerns, yet when we do, we hear nothing back. And when we meet, and when the meeting agenda is posted just twenty-four hours in advance, there isn't enough time to properly review complex ordinances or prepare meaningful questions. We show up to engage, and yet we're encouraged to rely on email where responses don't come. And all the while, the people who could give us answers are sitting in front of us at these meetings, choosing not to. We deserve more than that. We deserve real answers and respect for the time and effort we put in into participating into this process. Where exactly is the two-million-dollar grant going? Now that two of the three original objectives in the grant application no longer apply with the current priorities? And what is the plan to ensure we have enough police and fire personnel, especially when overtime was already an issue back when we had a hundred and fifty officers? Again, I'll repeat, we have less than a hundred and nineteen. You, this panel, have me and many others anxious. Decisions are being made without explanation. You choose to ignore us, you choose to look past us, and now our safety and our ability to continue living here is at risk, and you can't even explain why. I take time away from my family and my personal responsibilities to be here to participate, to ask questions, and to stay informed. That's time I don't get back. And far too often, it feels like the investment is for nothing. We come here because we care, but that's the point. But what's the point, when we're met with silence, deflection, last-minute information that makes real public, real public involvement nearly impossible? Will this, okay. Will this salary increase come back up this year?
Are those all your questions?
They don't have to answer, so if you're done with your comments, you can sit down, I'll keep talking.
I'm giving the opportunity to say they're not going to answer.
Okay, any answer?
B.A.?
No, I have any answer.
Where is the two-million-dollar gonna be going to for the grant?
Council President, may I answer that question? It's in the budget. So, on sheet twenty-four B, Mr. Rodriguez of the budget, this is general appropriations, operations excluded from cap, so the public and private programs offered by revenues. So, this is where the legislative grant is listed. You'll see three line items, police salary and wages for nine hundred thousand dollars.
No, I saw that.
So, that's where the grant money is gonna go.
But a lot of those police officers went, so where does the money go now?
The money is gonna be appropriated how it says in the budget. That nine hundred thousand dollars is gonna be used to offset salary and wage appropriations in the police department. One million dollars for salary and wages, and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for employee health benefits.
Can I send my questions to the B.A. to get the rest of the answers?
Your time is up. Darnell Gibbs?
I like that response, brother, I like it. Darnell Gibbs, four hundred, Lincoln Avenue. So, I'm gonna reference, uh, speak about our previous ordinance, and then I'll get back to what she just said. So, I wanted to bring to everybody attention Resolution four zero eight dash twenty twenty-five, where I emailed the lovely city council members, including the attorney. No problem. Public records, public records indicate that Orange Preservation Partners operates under the name Washington Dodd and has been reported that Washington Dodd Preservation was formed as a foreign company in New Jersey, September eighth. In order to do this, the company must have registered their concert, company as a anonymous company in Delaware on September fifth, not too long ago. After sending an email for a second time yesterday, October seventh, in regards to my concern, I was informed that the company was vetted. Perhaps the vetting of this company was rushed, and ones doing the vetting missed facts such as the following. The group that's buying the property is owned by the same company. That's the first issue I have. The second issue that I have is that this company is not even a month old, but everybody's believing that this company has experience managing property, which they don't have. Also, I've been in business consulting for ten years. I've never able, was never able to get a client multimillion-dollar loan for a company that's one month old. But we assume that this particular company's gonna get one. So, as to the resolution she's referencing for the two-million-dollar grant, I read the grant. The grant exclusively stated that it was gonna be applied to retain, to retain these personnel. I'm a very proactive person, I like to plan in advance. So, I've said it numerous times, some stuff we should think ahead. If the grant is gonna be able to, was gonna be able to retain these particular individuals, why not just simply have a resolution already pre-drafted with these eleven? I tell you the exact amount of people. I know my time's running short. I apologize. So, on the grant application itself, it says that the funds was gonna be used for ten police officers, eleven firefighters, and seventeen civilian administrators. So, once again, why didn't we just decide to be proactive and actually list these individuals? So, this way, the individuals who left the great township of Orange, i.e. the police officers, they probably would've never left. We're already short-staffed. I'm in law enforcement for over fifteen years. The larger your population, the more police you need. But yet, we decided to let these people go out of fear of being laid off. Thank you.
Lydell Carter?
Good evening, folks, my name is Lydell Carter, one nine six Claremont Terrace. I want to make reference to ordinance fifty-eight, twenty twenty-five. But in order to do so, I want for folks to imagine what it's like living in an area in which there's one yield sign on, on South Harrison and no traffic signs at all on South Center Street, and coming out of a one-way street in the morning every day, hoping through the grace of God someone gives you opportunity to get through. Now, while we might not have a ton of accidents that have been reported, the number of near misses that happens on that street is extraordinary. And what I don't want to happen to any of my neighbors, and we have young neighbors in the neighborhood, we have older folks in the neighborhood, is to get into a fatality just trying to get off their block. What we're asking for is that you shut down the exit on South Center Street and Harrison. Just shut that down. The neighbors have all agreed that we can go up the block on Sylvan Way, and that's the way we'll exit. That will avoid all of those issues. We've been talking about this now for, with Councilmember Johnson, this has been like three years, right? We're not asking for anything major right now. If we can get a temporary barrier that prevents people from leaving the block, then that will solve a ton of problems and hopefully solve a serious injury or fatality in that neighborhood. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Brent Engle?
Good evening, Brent Engle, one seventy-four Haywood Avenue. I was looking at the ordinance, two of them actually. One of them was pulled. It was the twenty, uh, twenty-million-dollar grant or bond ordinance. And then I saw the number sixty-two, twenty twenty-five for the minimum water charges. Now, I find it interesting that this is supposed to pay for lead pipes. Now, wasn't there something about the federal government? You know, um, helping places? I mean, City of East Orange, City of Newark, they had them replaced. So, I'm curious as to what happened in the City of Orange. Why are you taking it from a bond ordinance, which, let's face it, the citizens are gonna have to pay for in advance, you know, over time? And now you're directly putting it on the city? People who live in the city via a minimum water bill plus a hike in the charges for quarterly water plus an increase in a quarterly soar bill? It, it's, it's mind-boggling that, you know, it, it, to me, it seems like something fell through the cracks that we had a company or we had people in-house who could not write a grant to get money. Last year, there was a resolution, uh, fifty, uh, five-five-one dash twenty twenty-four where the City of Orange received six hundred and fourteen thousand plus or minus dollars from NJDOT to pave Haywood Avenue. Or at least a portion thereof. I've not seen anybody ripping up, milling down, and/or paving any part of that road. I live on Haywood Avenue. I understand the problems that people have on Claremont Terrace. Okay, 'cause if I leave my house anytime after three o'clock, I do not go down to Center Because if I leave my house anytime after 3 o'clock, I do not go down to South Center Street and make, try to make a turn left. I go up to Haxton, go around, go around, and then I use the traffic light at Tremont Avenue. That's the same thing, unfortunately, they all have to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engle.
Ed Donnelly, 419 Central Avenue. Council President, council members, BA, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm speaking on Resolution 414. I'm here today to let you know that the state FMBA has been and will continue to be here to help this city maintain its public safety personnel, okay? I feel that there's a lot of miscommunication floating around between council members, the mayor. I'm here to talk about conversations that I had personally with the BA, with the mayor in regards to this grant. And let me start by saying, when the BA talks about it, it was at the behest of Senator Timberlake, and I want to take nothing away from Senator Timberlake, who worked her butt off to get this money. It was at the behest of the New Jersey State FMBA that went to Senator Timberlake to ask for solutions to be able to maintain our public safety personnel. While we were in that office, in the BA's office, the mayor was there, my members were there, we spoke about getting that money. We called civil service while we were in that room to make sure we can pull back the layoff notices that were out. These are real, these are real conversations, and BA, if I'm stepping outside, please, let's debate this. What also was said in that room was that we would be good through 2026. We also talked about, this was a Band-Aid, you guys needed help in '26 and '27 to get you to '28, and I promised and pledged in that room to come back and be a source of help to this city to make sure we maintain these men and women that you vitally need in this city. So for my members to go into a negotiation meeting with the BA a couple weeks ago, and layoffs in January are spoken about in that meeting, that infuriates me. That is not what friends that try and work together try and do. Not only were we talked, they were told about future layoffs in January, they were talked about possibly doubling the amount of firefighters that would be laid off. I just want to let you know that this city is not adequately staffed today, so any reduction in workforce for your public safety is going to be detrimental to the citizens and visitors of this city. I pledge again to be here with you. I spoke to Senator Timberlake, she will as well. We will do what we need to do to make sure that this city has the proper amount of firefighters to protect a growing city. This city's not stagnant, this city is growing. We need our public safety to grow with the city. So I'm not here to, to cause a nuclear bomb, I'm here to say, we're here to help you. We will continue to help, we will continue to be a source of income for you where we can find it, we're open to negotiations, we are not walking away on this city, we are here to help.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Sean O'Grady.
Good evening, everybody. Sean O'Grady, 419 Central Avenue. I'd like to introduce myself, I'm the FMBA president for the Firefighters Union Local 10. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today on the issue that strikes the heart of the community and the safety and the resilience of this community. I'm here to talk about something that's a concern for every single resident in our city, the possibility of layoffs for firefighters again, just after in July, these members received layoff notices, which, as President Donnelly said, was mitigated by a grant that we received from Senator Timberlake. Let's be clear from the beginning, this is not a mistake, not just a policy mishap, but a risk that could cost lives, property, even the sense of security that allows an urban environment to thrive. In any city, but especially in urban environment like ours, dense, fast-moving, and complex, firefighters are not optional. They are not just emergency responders, they are first responders, frontline defenders, community lifelines. Let's be honest, fires don't wait, neither do medical emergencies, neither do car accidents, chemical spills, or even natural disasters. In our city, response time is everything, and we cut firefighter staffing, you don't just stretch a team thin, you slow it down. In an emergency, seconds counts. A two-minute delay can mean a difference between a confined fire and a neighborhood fully involved, between life and death. Layoffs of firefighters do not save money, they shift the cost. Fires that spread further cause more property damage, which means higher insurance rates, slower emergency response, means more injuries, more lawsuits, and strain on hospitals. Communities feel deeply, especially our underserved neighborhoods, which already face barriers to health and safety. Let's not forget, our firefighters do more than fight fires. In urban environments, they often are the first on scene for medical emergencies, traffic accidents, hazardous materials. During natural disasters like floods or storms, it's a firefighter who carries the elderly out of the buildings, who rescue people from wrecked cars, who wade into danger when others are running away. Laying firefighters off is not just cutting jobs, it's cutting preparedness, cutting reliability, cutting our capacity to bounce back when disasters strike. We cannot afford that, not when the city faces rising climate risk, aging infrastructure, and growing populations. A high-rise fire, according to NFPA, which is National Fire Protections Association, it takes 42 personnel to respond to a high-rise fire, and we operate on a standard of 13 a day. We need more firefighters, better equipment, stronger support, not fewer boots on the ground. Public safety should never be, public safety should never be the first place we take to cut corners. Because we gamble in emergency service, we're not trimming the fat, we're cutting into the bone of what holds our city together. Let's not learn the hard way, let's invest in our protectors and stand with our response, with our responders, ensure that when the alarm sounds, our city is ready to answer the call. These men and women behind me operate at any number, and they don't, they don't weigh in any professionalism at any cost. Day in, day out, they answer these emergency calls, even with the inherent risk of getting hurt or even dying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gloria Bozeman. Gloria Bozeman. Gloria Bozeman.
Gloria Bozeman, 345 Alcott Street. I have a couple of questions about some resolutions that I'm going to ask tonight, but I know that your response will be, you will respond if and when you deem it appropriate. I don't think there's any other job that you, I don't think there's any other job that you could give that response to people who you are accountable and responsible to. I find it offensive that you say to us that you'll respond if and when it's appropriate, if you ever choose to do so. I also would like to ask questions about 416-2025. I'm not exactly sure what this off-duty police management services will involve. I'd like to know something about 429-2025, where we are talking about the investment for a capital project without identifying exactly what the capital project is. In this city, we see development going on every day. We see it rising to the capacities that we know we can't really support in infrastructure. We're hearing our service people, thank you, by the way, we do appreciate your service to the community. I know you don't hear it often, but we do thank you for that. And I want to say that in that thank you, there is a responsibility that you also have. You are here tonight, but this salary issue will come up again, and there will only be a few of us standing here to support you, because we know how this operation experience, we know how this body operates. And it's not that I disrespect you, many of you, you know I like you very much personally, but in this body that you've accepted this particular responsibility, your accountability is to the residents in this community. I often talk about the infrastructure that's going up, all of the development, what is it that we're going to get? What's the benefit to us who currently reside in this community? I said, the library is a concern to me, it can be a focal point of quality of life for a community. You only funded it at $800,000. I went and I looked, I said, well, can developers contribute to development of different things in the community? And I found out that developers can contribute to city libraries, and that they can donate lands or funds and leveraging programs under a 2018 law. You need to have brought that to our attention, not us bringing that to your attention. No, I'm not going to email anybody, because you often tell me that your responsibility is not to an individual, it's to the community. And so what is the one-on-one going to serve us when the talk is not in the public forum? I know that I'm going to continue to come, because that's my civic responsibility. I'm asking you to live up to your elected responsibility. It's time that you know that these seats that you sit in now, you don't own them. 2026 is coming.
Harold Johnson. Harold Johnson.
That's the highest it goes.
Good evening, Harold J. Johnson, Jr., 235 Fuller Terrace, Orange, New Jersey. Good evening, Council President, council members, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I finally not robbery to stop back this month, because last month, I missed the opportunity to speak on something that's very dear to my heart, and it's, it's a public address message right now. I'm deviating a little bit away from the important information that is, that's going on here, but I deem this to be very important, too, also. Amongst, one of the things that I started to do right after I got finished retiring from, from the city council and from Portman America, was deciding, what was I going to do with my spare time? What was I going to do with giving back and helping the community? And one of the things that, that I came across, that I can make an impact in our community, is, is bringing to, to the forefront financial literacy, and also, and making sure that not only my neighbors, but family members and everybody else, understand that there's tools available to us in the financial industry space that goes unnoticed, and I see the suffering in our community year after year, generational wealth not being talked about or being distributed in, in our families, only because there's information that we're not grasping and utilizing. And one of the reasons why I stopped in last month, because last month was National Life Insurance Awareness Month, and it's very clear, if anybody goes on the computer and you Google, Google copilot search engine or Google, and just simply asks the question, is, is whole life insurance an asset? And get a response from, all this free information that's out there in the community, and you'll find yourself making other decisions other than being a depositor, consumer, and a debtor. The, the big game industry has us all locked into those three things, so I would encourage anybody in the sound of my ear, Google, can whole life insurance be an asset? And read the information, and do your own research, and actually, it will make a difference in your life, and you won't be just a consumer and debtor and depositor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Gerald Murphy.
Good evening, Gerald Murphy, 26 South Harrison Street, Orange, New Jersey. I'm coming today to talk about 3941 Berwin Street. Just want to put the city on notice that the land back there is contaminated, so I don't want no one from DPW to go back there and touch it, because then the city's going to be liable if they touch it and push and contaminate the soil. So I have a letter, hopefully tomorrow, from the environmental, that states that the soil is contaminated, I believe you have to go down like five feet by 10 to remove the dirt. I just found the trucking company to haul it away. That's why I want to put you guys on notice, because they were about to go and mess with their soil. Then it would have been on the city. Second thing I want to talk about is 42 to 60 Berwin Street, the six properties, we're going to, Mr. Harway said last week that he came in with a quote, so we're going to issue a check so that we can disconnect at the main, and then we can continue to take all that out. Still have the footing on the properties, but we can't do anything until we disconnect the main, and he's aware of that. So you guys can't just go around to people's property and just want to touch, 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 because you don't know what's hot or what's not hot, and then you guys are going to be reliable. Call the individuals to find out what's going on with their properties, don't just show up, because then you're going to be responsible. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. A motion to close citizen comment?
Motion to close citizen comments, Summers Johnson.
Second, Colley.
Motion to close citizens comments was made by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilwoman Colley. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion adopted. Council comments, Council President?
Councilwoman Hilbert. Good evening, everyone. This is a very moving council meeting. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the residents who showed up here, the constituents. I don't think these are the constituents who are just on orange real talk, I think these are people who are dedicated into learning what's going on in their community, and you're not afraid to speak up, so I thank you all for being here. I also like to say thank you to the union reps who came here to tell us all at the same time what is truly going on in this community, because a lot of things do get missing, missed in communication here, not all of the council members get the same information. I'm not saying that that's intentional, but unfortunately, that hurts us as a body and how we respond and how we prepare to support you in the day and day, the day jobs that you do here. And I just want to say thank you for showing up. I hope I see some of you guys more, but thank you for showing up and, and addressing the real concern, and that is to make sure that your jobs are protected and that this city is protected, and the city is not protected without you. You guys are not optional. It is a necessary, a necessary concern that we're talking about right now, and this is something I always voice when we're looking at these tax abatements and all these new buildings we have going up. When we're talking about the impact study, why aren't we including new fire station or a public safety department, new buildings for our municipal employees? Because we need the employees, we need the fire and the police in order to service these new citizens that you're bringing into the community. And to Dr. Bozeman, there is more we can do when it comes to negotiating with developers. I don't think we negotiate here. We don't realize our power as a body. Instead of taking our money upfront, we should really be submitting invoices to them. Pick up this bill for us, we had an infrastructure issue over in the east, or the west, or the south ward. Pick up this tab we got for Bell Stadium, look how Bell Stadium looks, we just had homecoming. Bell Stadium probably looks the same way it did back in 1985.
It doesn't.
I'm just exaggerating, but you get, catch, rock with me, flow with me, okay? So what I'm saying is, there is an opportunity that we could take to negotiate and work with developers to get what we need for our public employees, those who are serving us, to service our school district, and to give back to the community. There's something that I've spoken about last year, it's called participatory budget committees. It's happening in Jersey City, it's happening in Freehold, it's happening in Asbury Park. The council can mandate by changing our charter to put aside capital funding in order for the residents to propose projects that they want to see in their community. That means you get access to your tax dollars to spend it how you please. You're coming to these meetings and you're asking us, what's the benefit? That right there is putting the power back in your hands, to saying, we as a council, we're going to be transparent, and we're going to focus on rebuilding your trust in us. But if we have to have people come to a meeting to say, hey, all of you are not in the know of what's going on in the community, so we had to come and address you at a council meeting, that means that we're not communicating, we're not all on the same page, we don't have the same priorities. And the number one priority is always supposed to be, what do the residents need? And the number one priority is always supposed to be, what do the residents need? What did they elect us to do here? How are we advocating for our employees and how are we planning for the future? And making sure that the improvements are accounted for when we're going through the budget. I don't think the Senator or the state of New Jersey intended us to use that $2 million bailout because that's exactly what it was. I don't think they intended us to use that for salary increases. So I just want us to be more responsible. Because 55-2025 is going to come back. You guys are just probably going to shave down the number. So I'm going to skip past that. I have real questions through the council president to the law department. I just want to be very frank. You've been, I don't know if it's you per se or your staff, but there's been a lot of things in limbo. I need to know what's going on with permit parking because you state that there's this invisible thing that we can't have permit parking in the west ward. I also want to know what about my Airbnb legislation that I put out there that could be generating money for this community so that we can have for the salary and wages? And I also want to talk about the ADU. The ADU I have not presented to you, but I got a mysterious email for our council president that says that you want to work on something that I've already worked on and you guys haven't showed any interest in working with me on the Airbnb. But now that the residents come to you about the legislation that I worked on, now you want to propose me something that was done in Plainfield. But if we're really going to work on this together, please show the same type of communication with everything else that I propose. So I'm waiting for an answer from the law department in regards to where those things stand because that's stagnant and that's money on the table.
Are you done, Councilwoman Gilbert?
My time is up. I pushed my mic away and I was waiting for a response from the law department.
He said no response.
You have no response. As a councilwoman, I just asked you, where are we with Airbnb?
So Councilwoman, number one, I don't have any response with respect to your permit question because I didn't respond to, I didn't say what you said, number one. Number two, the Airbnb, I will look into that and get back to you tomorrow. I don't have a response to the third question because that wasn't directed to me. Anything else?
So go back to the permit parking. What was the issue with the permit parking?
I don't know what you're referencing, ma'am. Anything else?
Hold on one second. You do know what I'm referencing and these meetings are recorded. So if I go to an ethics committee and I say that my law department is hindering me from doing my job and servicing the people in the west ward, they can look at these videos. I've brought this up at multiple meetings.
Wait until you do that.
Okay. So now that you all see how things operate in the city of Orange, when I write legislation because that's what I'm elected to do because residents are waiting two years for permit parking and they told us we had to wait because they had to create a parking authority that you guys failed in. And then you changed it into a parking utility. And then you're using people who are already hired and now you're advertising for a parking enforcement officer, but you can't even hold on to police officers. So what sense does that make? Stop playing with me.
Are you done?
Now I'm done.
Because y'all not going to do that. Councilman Colley.
Hey, Council President, thank you.
You're welcome.
I brought this to, I think, Mr. Marty, I mean raised, and Marty attention down by the PNC Bank, by the park my job where we have like a, some kind of water leak that's coming out the side, that's coming out the street. It's been in that condition for a couple of months. And on my list was update on Bourbon Street with development. What's your status with the project?
Did you say Berwin Street?
Yeah, Berwin, yeah, Berwin Street, yes.
So as the gentleman spoke about before, the water disconnections at the main are taking place within the next couple of weeks. The demolitions already took place. The foundation demolitions will take place when the water connections are complete and then we'll meet with the developer to find out his construction schedule.
Now, I just heard for the first time, I don't know if it's true or not, he's some ground soil contamination. How can that be a city issue when it's on private property?
I think the issue was that certain personnel from the city arrived at the site and were going to call in a cleanup for the city to go in and do some cleanup work because of the way it looked. And it was brought to their attention that they couldn't do that because of the soil condition. That's what was being referred to.
All right. And South Main Street development, how's that coming along?
What about South Main?
Is it, how's it coming along, the, an update, status?
On the project?
Yes.
It's under construction. They've received their footing and foundation permits. They're actually pouring foundation permit, foundations now. And they'll continue with their construction as their building permit applications are under review.
Okay. And I spoke about this like a while ago, repaving William Street from the East Orange line up to Park Street. How, what's the status with that?
It's on the list of approved streets to be repaved.
All right. And one last, the rec center, we have an update on that.
We should have a redevelopment agreement before the council by December first meeting.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Easton.
I'm going to do a couple of things first. I just wanted to say that on October the first, we had motor vehicle at St. Matthews and we serviced over 50 people.
Speaking to the mic, Councilwoman.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And on October the first, we had motor vehicle, divisional motor vehicle at St. Matthews, and we serviced over 50 residents to get their real ID and some of the other services that they needed. Pink Out in Orange on Saturday was excellent. It was a collaboration between East Orange and Orange. And they, we were, we had a great turnout, great weather, and a great march. And we all supported, and I think the number was over $7,000 we raised to support cancer research that was given to A Angels, which is the group that has all of the resources for cancer. And one of the other things I want to clarify to Ms. Rodriguez, and she said, she stood up and said that one person voted against the, I was never for the salary ordinance and I did not vote for it. So if you're going to do information, do the facts correctly.
Council, council member, you abstained.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Gilbert, you not being recognized.
It doesn't matter. It's supported.
You're not, Councilwoman Gilbert, you can't interrupt somebody who's talking. Councilwoman Gilbert, you are not.
You cannot call out to residents like that.
But I'm just saying.
That's not the point either.
Councilwoman Gilbert, you are not being recognized.
And you don't have nothing to do with it. And I'm not going to argue with you because if you want to make respect to yourself, you go right.
It's not a point of order.
Councilwoman Gilbert, you are out of order.
Point of order. Point of order.
And I'll say again.
Point of order.
I did not support it.
Point of order.
Yes, I did abstain and I didn't agree with it going on the agenda because my focus is, right now, all I'm concerned about is getting some uniforms for my crossing guards. We don't have money. So I would never support a raise in salary when there's other things that need to be done in this city. And that is my two cents from me.
Excuse me. Could we just, Councilwoman Easton?
Get better understanding of.
Council, can we just like listen to her, please? Just please.
I never supported the layoffs, even during the budget, I didn't support them. We, I don't think it's fair that we got rid of or we were laying off firemen and police officers. And you guys know, I always support you guys. No matter what you come for, I always support it. So I don't know where all of the misinformation is coming from. We are all in agreement. We don't agree with the layoffs, but sometimes that's unnecessary even to save money. And we're trying to find money. So let's get the record straight. And I, as I said before, I never supported the salary ordinance and no matter how I voted, I did not support it. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and Mr. Gibbs, I'm hoping that you get the information right. You keep talking about Washington D.C. I need you to get the facts straight. So why don't you go over and find out who's really buying it? Because the information you're sharing is not correct. We've been, we have been 100% involved in that negotiation with Washington D.C. And hopefully we'll keep it affordable, which is our, which is what we're trying to do is make sure it stays an affordable complex for the residents that live there. And we had a meeting last Thursday. They explained what's happening over there. So I just wish you would get your facts straight and stop talking about stuff that is not really reality. We have a law department here who does all the legal work. They get paid money to keep us out of court and to make sure everything is legit. And that's what they do.
I submitted two articles of probation for the.
Sir, point of order, and if we have another outbreak like this, I am going to clear the agenda and this meeting is going to be stopped.
You can also have him removed, Council President.
Because they don't want to hear the truth. Everybody wants to come in here and say what they got to say, but nobody wants to hear the truth. And I'm about telling the truth. It's not black and white, it is the truth. And we do have, and the other question I have, we have ward forums all the time and people come out. What is the point of having a ward forum if you don't get your questions answered? The business administrator is there, the mayor is there, everybody's there in a captive audience. And anything that anybody wants to know when they have them forums, if you want to know, attend them. And that's why you should get your information and have your councilperson answer some of the questions that you're asking because they should know the answer. So let's just all work together, stay unified. And I was, and I support fire and police, I don't believe in layoffs. And we're looking for ways to find some money to make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Thank you.
Council. Councilman Montague.
Good evening, everyone. I just need some status updates on a few of, you know, ongoing situations we have. As far as the parking utility, status in the formulation, do we have a timetable?
So the financial portion will start until the first of the year. However, the operations have already started in terms of preliminary work. We have an individual who clerks out of the finance office who's doing some preliminary review of permit parking on streets throughout the city and the infrastructure software that's necessary for the parking enforcement and permit issuance as well as coordination with PATS, which is the Automated Parking Enforcement Program and software that's hooked directly to the administrative office of the courts. So all of those preparations are underway.
Okay. How about the status of the new parking meters from Park Street to Glenwood?
So I'm going to go back and check and defer to Chris Mobley, but I believe that. They haven't been ordered yet, but we've approved the funds.
Yeah, we need the money. Second, what's the status update on the Orange Memorial Site? Where are we at right now?
There's a pending application, a financial application from the developer that's under review by the administration and by the city's consultant. That review is going to take some time. And once we have that complete, then we'll have meetings to negotiate how we go forward with a financial agreement.
Okay. And I know Councilman Colley mentioned it, but as far as the YMCA site, we're going to see some movement this year?
So you probably have a redevelopment agreement in front of you in December.
In December. And a question I've had for a while, I used to ask it regularly. What are we going to do with the fire station on Washington Street?
I don't know the answer to that question at this point in time.
I think we need, we need a department on my side of town, definitely. You know, we have a lot of senior citizen buildings in that area. Are we, are we thinking about, you know, doing something, construction or anything?
I'm thinking about rehabilitating the firehouse.
Okay. And is it true, is it contaminated?
There was contamination, that's why it was closed.
Okay. It's been remediated since then?
It's in the process of remediation.
Okay. And I just want to let all, all our public safety employees, police, fire, you know, we support you. So I support you guys. So thank you so much.
Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you guys for coming out this evening. And I just want to make it perfectly clear that all of us up here, no one up here supports layoffs. Okay, no one, okay? And we all want to save everyone's job, everyone. Public safety is very important to all of us. So we're going to work hard to keep jobs and avoid layoffs if we can, okay? Breast cancer, we had, as Councilwoman Easton said, we had breast cancer awareness month. We had a great walkout yesterday, Saturday. It was excellent. There's over 1,000 people, I would say, out there, okay? There was a bunch of vendors there, you know, support groups and all of that. It was excellent. And I just want to say breast cancer is the second leading cause of death in the United States behind heart disease. It's very important to get screened as early as possible. Early detection leads to a timely diagnosis and effective treatment. Remember, taking care of your health today could save your life tomorrow. Get screened, men, this applies to you also. Yes, men can get breast cancer. To the BA, Vanilla Park and Garage Gate, has that been installed yet?
Supposed to be installed later this month. That's why we needed the two resolutions that are on here for those two payment applications.
Okay, great. Vanilla Leah, or Vanilla Two, I like to call it, is it open yet?
They're accepting residents, yes.
Can you or someone schedule a tour for us to visit the building and see what it looks like? And I think you answered the status of the parking utility. The gates in Seven Oaks, summer is over. Will those gates remain closed for the fall and winter weekends?
I don't know. I have to speak to DPW and the mayor.
Okay. Nassau Street, and I'm going to ask you, Councilwoman, what's the update on that, if you have anything?
I don't really have an update. However, I spoke with Marty Mays because I said at this point, we probably need to have a meeting with West Orange because supposedly they weren't in favor of the one-way, even though they never said anything to me. I thought it was going great. If we don't do a one-way on Nassau, we have to figure out something because they're coming home and there's nowhere to park and they can't even park in their own, their own driveways and things. So BA, Chris, can you set up a meeting with West Orange? Because I don't think they can just say no. I think we have to compromise.
The last, just, and maybe Marty didn't know this, but the last conversation with the business administrator in West Orange was that they were waiting for the completion of their valley traffic and parking study. And that when they received that, then they would give us an answer about the one-way.
But that was in the spring. I remember you said that in a council meeting.
Correct.
So we need to find out when that, yeah, the stat of that study.
Right.
Because right now, they're going crazy.
Okay.
Thank you. And lastly, we have a general election on November the 4th. As you know, we will be voting for a new governor, assembly clerk, and our local school board. The last day to register to vote, if you are not registered, is next Tuesday, October 14th. Early voting begins on October 24th. Please register, please vote. Every vote counts and makes a difference. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Thank you. For today's meeting, I picked up Council President, I want to say about 6 o'clock. We came upstairs, I guess we got here around 6:30. We walked this whole council chamber praying over this meeting, asking that our words be guided. And I knew it was going to be a hostile meeting. When the union president came up, he mentioned himself. He said. He said the mayor, he said Senator Timberlake, and he said BA Chris had a meeting about the $2 million. None of those names are council people. Not our president, not our vice president. I recall asking about the $2 million, because I read a Facebook post that the $2 million was going to fire. I asked in the council meeting, I thought the $2 million was to save jobs like across the board, I thought it was gonna save everyone. That's what I thought. And I, and I forgot what was said, but it was basically like, no layoffs. The word layoff, every time I turn around, somebody tells me they're laid off, and I'm like, wait, I thought it was no layoffs. I have nothing, we were not in a meeting. Sometimes we're told different things. I know I asked about the $2 million. It's known I'm a firefighter's wife, so I can't imagine why I would wanna cut fire, or police, or safety. I know the importance of that. So, on that, that's where I'm not for layoffs for anyone, fire, police, regular, just regular people that have been working here. I don't understand it. I haven't for a while. I don't understand how we're spending more than we're bringing in. I've tried to bring cannabis, I don't know, I walked door-to-door, it was really hot the whole summer, getting residents who already voted for, in favor of it. As far as the ADUs, I don't know how the miscommunication happened, but I had meetings. And the issue that we had when it first came up about two years ago, was that residents wanted the additional dwelling, but they didn't wanna be taxed on it, or something like that, remember? That came up. So, I don't, like I said, a lot of side conversations, side meetings, I have nothing to do with, I don't know anything about. I know that Senator Timberlake was doing something with ADUs on a higher level. I know that Plainfield just did it, so we were talking with Mayor Map about that. Again, I don't know, side conversations, side meetings, I have nothing to do with it. As far as permit parking, again, every time Councilwoman Hilbert says we can't have permit parking, I always look at Wu and, and I always say, where did that come from? Because I know you got four votes and it passes. No one's gonna tell me I can't have permit parking. So, I don't know where that came from. Put it up, let's vote on it. Like, I don't know about waiting for a parking authority, auxiliary, whatever name you wanna call it. If the residents need parking, they need parking, because Nassau is gonna get permit parking, and that's what's gonna solve whatever is going on over there. I know Haywood Avenue came up about paving, I'm gonna let you know right now, I do not talk about a street being paved unless I have a letter in my hand that says, on this date, you will not be able to park on the street. I walked Valley Street this summer, and that's why they're doing Valley Street right now. Haywood is definitely on the list, that's what I was told, but until I see it in writing, I will not tell you that your street is gonna be next. You will not come up here and say that I said we were gonna do your street. I heard it, I walked it, they told me, and it was also gonna have speed bumps. I heard all of that. But until I see the letter that says no parking on this date, that is when they're gonna do your street. I do not wanna lie. If you want me to lie, they're gonna do it tomorrow. I'm not gonna lie to you. I'm just being honest. I've been told, those who know I've been on this council a long time, I've been told a lot of things were gonna be done, and they weren't done. So, I'm in the habit of only saying what I see in writing and what I can prove. So, with that being said, we're gonna agree to disagree. People are gonna be very, you know, angry and upset, and we may use this mic for various uses, but if it doesn't, bring us together. If it doesn't improve our relationships, it's just talk, and we have enough of that. Our local newspapers that we pay to put our news out, we had kids get their bachelor, their associates from Orange Eye, that wasn't on the front page. We've had so many wonderful things happening in the city of Orange, our local papers will not cover it. This salary increase came out, front page. The paper that we pay to tell our good news tells no good news and half truths. And they've done that since the 80s. No, 70s, I guess, because I've been here. Thank you.
You are, okay. You done? When I came to the meeting tonight, I ride in the car with Councilwoman Summers Johnson, I talked about Ruby Freeman and Ms. Moore. So, some of you may know who these people are, some of you may not know who these people are. But prior to this meeting, I received text messages, I received telephone calls about the fire union is coming. So, those women were intimidated. So, I had a big speech about intimidation and how I'm not gonna be intimidated, because I'm not. But I see now, there's a lack of communication. So, anybody that wants to speak to Council President Adrian Wu, everyone has my telephone number, people know where I live. I know they know where I live, because when I'm out cutting the grass, they stop me, which I really hate that they do that, because now I gotta figure out how to start a lawnmower up again, or whatever. No one, no one from the city has said to me that they're gonna be layoffs, as I explained to someone when I got a telephone call about it. That first telephone call I got spoke about layoffs. And then when I get a text from that person, it's talking about salary increases. So, there's a little bit of not information that's given, and I feel like information is being held. So, for Adrian Wu, when you come and talk to me, I just prefer that we get it all out on the table, good, bad, or indifference. I don't not like honor and celebrate our firemen, no one can say that I don't. And no one can say that I don't support police nor fire, because I don't. But coming to this meeting tonight, I told Councilwoman Summers Johnson, last night, I was feeling like I was being intimidated. And I don't like that. And I felt like Ruby Freeman and Ms. Moore. And I definitely didn't like that. But as I came here today, I see that it's not intimidation, and I see there are just several people having conversations, and everybody is not in the room. So, I don't have a layoff plan from the city. No one has told Adrian Wu that we're gonna be laying off in January. And as I told that young man that called me that night, that's news to me. So, and I can't operate, and I will not legislate on hearsay, because I don't have it. So, I just wish you would give me that deference. I just wish you would. This is a crazy world, and people operate in not truths, and people don't fact-check, because if you look at ordinance 552025, it did say the council was gonna get a raise, because there was no range there. But if you flip the page to the second page, there's nowhere in this document that it said that we were giving $2 million worth of raises to anyone. And I know that's what's being said, because I got it in a telephone call, I got it in a text message, and somebody said it today. So, I suggest that you read the ordinance for yourself. It's just like when you go to church. When the preacher gets up and preached about the word, and he comes from a scripture, what do you do when you go home?
Read it.
You read it for yourself, for your own interpretation. So, I'm saying, a lot of times, we don't operate in truth, we operate in negatives, and I get it, that's what people do. But from Adrian, I suggest you give me a call. And when we talk about us not doing our jobs, on average, on average, I submit every year at least 81 pieces of legislation, because that's my job. So, I suggest that you go out and pull my record, and look at the legislation that I write, and look at the legislation and the meetings that I've had, and the research that I've done to do that legislation. And on top of that, look at how we support people. And there are ways that we support people that you don't even see. You don't see us paying rent, you don't see us buying groceries, you don't see any of that, and that doesn't come with the job. That's just something that we do, and we don't have cameras for that. So, I am going to apologize to the fire department, not that I need to, but after getting about five or six telephone calls, that the state union is coming from me, and we gonna bring a thousand people, and we gonna picket this, and we gonna picket that. If you were me, you would be upset too. But I see, listening to the conversations that were had here at the mic, it's just a matter of communication, and it's a matter of everybody not being in the room. And with that being said, I want to suspend the rules, and I want to recognize our state senator, Senator Brittany N. Timberlake, to see if she would like to come up and give us a few comments for the record. Senator Timberlake.
Thank you so much. Good evening to the Honorable Council Members of Orange, to Council President Adrian Wu, who obviously is, is wielding power and keeping control of her meeting. So, as a female elected, I was proud to walk in to see that, for sure. And I agree with you that communication is what is needed. Historically, I've had a wonderful relationship with the city of Orange, with Mayor Duane D. Warren, with your council presidents, and with each and every single one of you. It is my job, as the senator from this district, as a legislator, to go down to Trenton and bring back the bacon. Now, lately, the bacon has been a little bit more lean these days, because we don't know what's happening at the federal level. And any particular shift could change how much we can actually bring back and what it is that we can do. Going down, just the flash, bro. I just gotta, you know. Yeah. I think it's already recorded, right?
Not for real talk.
Not for real talk.
It has to go on Orange Real Talk.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's like the...
Okay, I just, I was starting to see spots.
I need some firefighters.
I'm sorry. I'll let you, all right. So, what I'm saying is, is I went down to Trenton this budget season, and I was able to bring back $2,050,000. There was conversations with the council as well, as far as the president, not in plural terms, in singular terms, and as well as the administration. And that is the appropriate way in which the legislature communicates. We talk through leadership throughout things. But as you know, you all also have my direct information and can contact me, right? It was my intention and my understanding, English is the only language that I speak, and I'm quite fluent in it.
Come through.
That the money would be used to save all jobs.
Thank you. Now, I'm not crazy. Now, I'm not crazy.
After our other calculations, and the money was passed in the state budget, within 24 hours, I was informed that it would be there for police and fire only. That was my conversations, that was my understanding. And then alarms began to sound, pun intended, that the money may not necessarily be there for that either. Now, I did go on a fact-finding mission to see how that was communicated and why, and I worked very closely with firefighters, particularly in and outside of my district, because the city of Newark is not inside my district, but my husband is a Newark firefighter.
Come through.
And I worked very closely with Ed Donnelly. In fact, we have about, I don't know, Ed, what is it, close to a dozen pieces of legislation to help support fire departments that will have a statewide impact, from things such as safe staffing ratios, to training mandates, to things that would even help their families to survive and pay out full pay as if someone had, you know, 30-plus years on the job, but unfortunately, lost their life, whether or not they had one day on the job or 30 itself. Things that will change the pension and benefits plan. And these things were really birthed out of what did occur in Newark, as well as Plainfield. The loss of Wayne Brooks and Augie Akaboo, Augie, who was a classmate of my husband's in the fire academy, and also Marquise Hudson from Plainfield, who just one year in, fell through a floor, and unfortunately, leaves behind his children, who are also, some of, who are also special needs. So, we have been working very hard to work in various ways to support our first responders. It's important to say that it won't just help firefighters only, but first responders. But it was birthed out of the firefighter experience and me being connected to this community through my husband and these tragedies. So, I'm glad that there seems to be, you know, there is an appetite for the communication. I sat where you sit, Madam President, you know, down at the county, as the president of the county for three years, and I know how it can feel whenever the constituents come in, and, you know, and the microphone is there, and people say what it is that they need to say. But just remember that you have a union, you have the right to collective bargain, you have, you know, this is the proper forum. No one should be stopping you in your lawn. This is where they should be able to come to, to say. So, I'm glad that you understood it wasn't intimidation, but this is, this is what happens. I am 100% in support of saving firefighter jobs, first responders' jobs, as well as the other civil service jobs that were already lost. Now, I heard chatter, just like you guys, like you were mentioning the chatter, that well, the state of New Jersey is, those legislators are getting a raise. That's true, actually. Two years ago, raises were voted on for the assembly people and the senators to have a raise that would be in effect two years later. We also have quite a bit of a surplus, and we also are in good financial position. Certainly were two years ago when that was put into place. And again, it still hasn't even taken effect yet. And we also didn't come to the city of Orange for assistance. So, that is true. I just wanna be very clear, because I don't like gossip, and I don't like falsehoods, okay? But one has nothing to do with the other.
That's right.
Right now, I am committed as a partner to this city, as a partner to our council president, Adrian Wu, and she knows that, to make sure, and I'll be at the table, as much as I'm welcome to be, to try to see what it is that we can do to generate revenue. I heard the mention of ADUs, and I don't know how much revenue those typically generate for townships, but they are a Trojan horse for affordable housing, which is why I love them. And the bill is being held up right now, it hasn't had much movement, and that would create a statewide opportunity for ADUs. And as you know, cannabis is up to your discretion to do, there was a statewide law. So, there are different revenue things and stuff that can be worked through and talked about, and I'm committed as a partner. But when I receive a call from any one of my towns that needs help, I'm gonna respond, perhaps not as heroic as these ladies and gentlemen behind me, but I respond in a very different way. And I responded this time with $2,050,000. And we need to make sure that that money is being used for what the original conversation and intent was. I don't care, let me be very clear, I don't care how broad the language was written. With the information that we have at hand, we need to be saving jobs. If we don't, it's gonna impact and reverberate through other fire departments. What do you think is gonna happen if Orange is understaffed and there's a five-alarm fire? Did I get that right? Does that mean Newark is coming and everybody's coming?
And Arlington is coming.
Because Orange could be understaffed, so now it impacts other towns. And then what if there's a fire happen in one of those towns and they're over here? Or God forbid, something else again, at one of the international facilities that we are in such close proximity to, such as an international airport and the port of New York, New Jersey? So, this is important. This is vital to our city, and I am here in support of them, and I'm here in partnership with you. But I wanted to clear up any rumor, and I wanted to put my intention on the record. And I wanted to let you know, what, from my vantage point, what it is and what it isn't. But we've got to do right. Because the people here are doing right by our, our, our town, our safety. And we again don't know what the future holds. Inflation is up. We're talking about there's an election coming. People don't really care too much about it if they're worried about their job. If they can't put food on the table, if they're trying to figure out how to provide for their family. And I know that we have people here who've been championing for jobs. Monty, I see the things that you put out regarding jobs. We know what, what it means to have a job. And then to have such an honorable position be put at stake. There's already outside risks that are gonna come in the future. AI. Last year, I was protesting with the ILA down at the port. I know council president was there as well, so her son-in-law is a member of the ILA. To save those jobs and to stop something called automation. What do we think automation is? Will Smith moving. Did we ever think, did we ever think we'd be here at iRobot, right? But there's already all these pending threats. Let's not be a threat to our own. Let's not join those threats. Okay? So, with that, I will conclude, because I know it's getting late. But I just want to be very clear where I stand. You know, and it's where I've always stood, is with the people and what's right. This is what principles over politics looks like. It's not about friendship, it's not about, and we could all still be friends. It's about the principle of the matter. And the principle of the matter is about saving jobs. And the state of New Jersey is also under the same impression that I was under and received quite a bit of support when I was down there rallying. A bit disappointed to hear that it could go in a different direction on the money. So let's, let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did I walk away questions? Did I walk away too early? Last time I did that, you were like...
Did anybody have any quick?
I have a question. You mentioned the word surplus, and my antennas went up real quickly.
State of New Jersey.
Okay. Can we count on you for our FY 2026 budget?
Let me see what you guys do with what I just got you. How about that?
Okay.
How about when I'm told that I'm gonna go and do something, and that this is what the, the expectation is gonna happen? Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's see. We can keep this partnership going, and that was the understanding that I even had with the state. I said they're gonna need some more. But how can I then go in good faith and tell that to, to my colleagues again, if it's not going to what I told them it's gonna go for?
I agree.
You, okay? You guys got me? This is serious stuff. Do you know what I could have done throughout the district with $2,050,000? Outside of the fire department, I'm very happy to have given it for these jobs, and I obviously chose to do that and would choose to do it again over and over. But it has to be spent for the discussion purposes. Just, it just, it's only righteous. So, that's what this is about. It's just, it's not personal. I promise you, it's not.
I agree.
You could even maybe see me at Bella later on, have a dinner with everybody. It's not personal. Okay? So, let's do right by it. Because how can I in good faith then not take the $2,050,000? And by the way, some of that money, as President Donnelly can attest to, was pulled from another fire department that was in anticipation of receiving rigs. But because this is my district, this is my home, I said, okay, they're gonna have to wait another year. We need it for home, we need it for Orange. We gotta save these jobs. And it was for the police, the fire, and the already laid-off civil service workers. So, you, you got, you got a friend in me for life. You just gotta do what you tell me you're gonna do. That's it. And if, and if, and if the plan changes, let me know. Have enough respect. I'm a woman in politics. Deal with me like you would deal with another person in politics.
Come on, come through.
Have the respect to say, hey, look. Switch. Okay?
I just wanted to say, everybody in this room will probably want to say thank you for what you did.
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Any more questions?
Now, I think I'm gonna go home and help my firefighter.
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for clearing it up, because I think that's what had me going. I know what I heard, I know what I asked questions about, and I know what I heard yesterday and the day before, and it wasn't the same. So, I thank you for coming and clearing it up.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna go help my firefighter husband put these babies to bed. You know, we got a lot of little ducklings.
Have fun with that.
Thank you. Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Baptiste, have a seat, please.
You guys can wait. He needs my car key.
Excuse us?
No, we cannot wait. Mr. Baptiste, have a seat, please.
He needs my car key. Just relax.
Councilwoman, uh, council president, it's time to start kicking people out.
It's not a big deal. He needs a car key.
I agree. Throw him out.
Excuse me, you have something to say?
Counsel...
I don't know, I don't see what the big deal is.
Can we get the police officer, please? Like, like, stop.
You're a clown. You're a clown. You're a clown. You're a clown.
So we, we communicating threats now?
That's why you have to throw him out.
Can we take a three-minute recess, please?
Please, please.
Motion for three-minute recess.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers, councilmembers, recess has passed. Councilmembers, if you'll return to your seats. Where's Eason? Where's Councilwoman Eason?
Alright, where are we?
Councilwoman Eason out there?
Nah, not that, not that long.
She said what?
She said, start.
She said start? I was told to, to start. Okay. Ordinances on second reading. Ordinance 54-2025, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 200-52-1, Handicap Parking Spaces, 266 Mount Vernon Avenue. Are there any citizens who wish to make a comment? Is there a motion to close citizens' comments?
Close citizens' comments, Summers Johnson.
Motion to close citizens' comments was made by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Coley. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens' comments, comments is closed. A motion to adopt.
Motion Coley.
Second, Ross.
Motion by Councilman Coley, second by Councilman Ross. On the motion? Roll call, Councilman Coley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Eason is absent. Councilwoman Hilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montague III.
Yes.
Councilman Ross.
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton.
Yes.
That's six yays, one absent. Motion is adopted. Ordinance 57-2025, an ordinance authorizing and providing for certain capital projects and purchases and appropriating $437,500 for said projects and purchases authorized to be undertaken in, by, and for the city of Orange Township in the county of Essex, New Jersey. Are there any citizens who wish to make a comment?
Do I have to repeat my, my name? Alicia?
Yes.
Alicia, 47, Mountain View. What are said projects? What are the said projects? What kind of projects are these? And is this a part of the budget that's already, part of the budget already?
This is for the Highland Avenue Train Station Rehabilitation Project. There was a resolution on the last agenda approving the contract for a vendor for over $3 million for the reconstruction and rehabilitation. This ordinance is appropriating money for that purpose.
So, it's gonna increase the overall budget for this year?
No, it, it won't. This money is being appropriated from capital fund balance, so the money has already been appropriated, because the money was canceled from further ordinances, from capital ordinances earlier in the year, and then it remains in the capital fund balance, and the money's being appropriated from there. It has, capital budget is separate from the operating budget. It's two separate budgets. No taxation is being done or authorized based off this ordinance. It's not a bond ordinance. It's a capital improvement ordinance, appropriate money from capital fund balance.
So it's just basically money you didn't use somewhere else and you're gonna appropriate it here instead?
Correct.
And...
It hasn't been appropriated yet.
But you're changing it, moving it around, basically?
It's being, it's unappropriated and it's being appropriated for the specific purpose.
Okay, so it's gonna be used to the Highland, to make it...
Highland Avenue Train Station Rehabilitation.
Okay. I thought there was a plan already done for that, and the budget was already made, so why are we giving them additional money if it was already... I mean, I don't know if you would know that. So we don't know, so, we changed the plan and now they need more money. You know what I'm saying? It doesn't make sense. Does the BA know? Mr. Hartwick?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The, for the ordinance 57-2025, the $437,000 additional for that project.
Right.
What, um, why did we need that additional money? We already calculated the funds that we needed and all the, everything was already done.
Because after you calculate what all the funds are, you have to go out to bid. And when the bids come in, if they come in higher than what you anticipated when you calculate it, you have to make up that difference. This is making up that difference. Based on actual costs.
So you make a plan before getting the price?
That's the way the public contracting law works.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close citizens' comments?
Motion to close citizens' comments, Summers Johnson.
Second, Coley.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Coley. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion adopted. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Motion by Councilwoman Eason, second by Councilman Ross. On the motion? Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague III?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooton.
Yes.
That's seven yays, motion is adopted. Ordinances on first reading, 58-2025, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicle and Traffic, to change traffic patterns on Claremont Terrace. Is there a motion to adopt on first?
Motion.
Second, Summers Johnson.
Motion by Councilman Montague III, second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. On the motion? Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eason?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague III?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooton.
Yes.
That's six, seven yays, motion is adopted.